Good afternoon. My name is Avodeo Wally, Vice President of the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce of Contra Costa County, and I'm out here with Juan Banalas, who's running for City Council in Pittsburgh. And we've invited Juan to come out here and share his perspective with us on what exactly he feels is in store for the city of Pittsburgh and how he'd like to drive impact. Thank you for coming out to share your thoughts with us, Juan.
Thank you for having me.
So tell us, what exactly do you feel it is that you're bringing to the table? And why does that stand to create significant impact for the city of Pittsburgh?
Sure. So, you know, I've lived in Pittsburgh my entire life, with the exception of a few years when I was out in college at UC Berkeley. But I have a deep passion for the city. It truly has a strong place in my heart. You know, in terms of what I can bring to the table, I think I can bring youth and vision to carry and move our city into the future. You know, there are some key elements that I think are gonna really decide what our city looks like in the next 10, 20 years. And I think being on the council is a very pivotal place to be. And I think I'm the person to take us there and to take the city forward. And so that's why I'm running for Pittsburgh City Council.
Fantastic. So certainly, you know, you must have your own fresh perspective, you know, considering, you know, you do want to kind of infuse the city council with that youthful perspective and, you know, bring that energy in there. What in particular would you like to see changed as a result of your participation in this policymaking role?
Right. So, you know, there are a couple of key tenants to the things that I'm looking to impact and change. You know, one of the things that I'm really looking forward to doing is actually supporting and growing our manufacturing industry in Pittsburgh. You know, that is at the core of what Pittsburgh was grown on, was our manufacturing. And right now, I feel that our manufacturing is struggling a little bit. You know, USS Posco in particular is having some issues right now with, you know, whether they're gonna, we're gonna lose potential, you know, hundreds of jobs or not. You know, so I think being a strong supporter of USS Posco is important for me and all manufacturing in the city of Pittsburgh. And so really, being a supporter and then also growing Pittsburgh. So how can we do that? You know, we have a certain amount of land in Pittsburgh, especially along the waterfront, that I think is suitable for, you know, joint tenancies or adding more to our manufacturing portfolio in the city. And of course, with manufacturing comes jobs, very good and high-paying jobs. You know, my parents, they came here from Mexico and they were fortunate enough to find jobs in manufacturing. And that's what I was raised on, you know, the income that they were able to have from manufacturing. And so, you know, unfortunately, those jobs left Pittsburgh, but there's still, there's still a lot there. You know, so that's one of the key tenants of my campaign. Another one is public safety. So, you know, I think that the public safety is very good right now in Pittsburgh. You know, the crime has gone down a lot. And our Pittsburgh Police Department is phenomenal. I mean, I think they've done such an amazing job, especially the police chief and the city manager. And I think we need to continue supporting our Pittsburgh police. You know, I think one of the things that we're starting to see is spill over crime from neighboring areas. And, you know, I think we need to continue to support, and I think we need to increase our support of our neighbors, specifically Aniak. You know, we want to see them succeed as well. And so partnering or encouraging our police department to partner with Aniak PD to really help them solve their crime issues is gonna go a long way to help the area as a whole develop and grow. And that includes partnering with the Aniak City Council as well.
Fantastic. So those are the two key areas that you'd like to drive immediate impact in, I can see. So what particular business regulatory issues do you kind of have in mind as far as, you know, kind of addressing some kind of optimization of how things are working? Like, what areas of the way city government is running would you like to create an impact in?
Yeah, I mean, I think for one, small business is a key factor in successful economic development in our city. And it is really difficult for small business to grow and prosper, especially in smaller cities. But I think what we can do as a city is provide easy access to city services and also provide, you know, some incentives to promote and grow small businesses. You know, I think the chambers do a great job of kind of bringing the business together. I think the city needs to have a strong partnership with the small businesses and chambers so that we can continue to grow our small businesses and business in general. But, you know, expediting the process in which businesses interact with the city, I think that would go a long way. You know, I think that city staff does a great job, and we have a phenomenal city staff, as I've worked with them a lot as Chair of the Pittsburgh Planning Commission. But there are definitely opportunities for growth and improvement in how business and the city government interacts.
Fantastic. So Pittsburgh Planning Commission surely puts you right on the ground of where all this is happening. So tell us about that and how you plan on making a segue from City Planning Commission to City Council.
Right. So, you know, I've enjoyed being on the Planning Commission for the last three years. It's been a phenomenal experience, really getting to see some of those big issues and getting to hear from our citizens on key issues, such as, you know, where developments, housing developments are gonna go, also, you know, use permits and et cetera for certain businesses. You know, some of the things that you end up seeing on the back end, I'll say, on the Planning Commission side, are decisions that were made by previous councils or councils that are currently in existence. And so some of those things, like the location of certain projects and deciding on, you know, the vision of where something is gonna go, has a huge impact on the back end when you're actually in the process of going through design reviews, et cetera. So I think that having that background and experience is gonna help me as a council member shape that vision for where we want to see developments and responsibly place them such that they have lower traffic impacts, lower impacts to our community in terms of safety. And so I think, you know, that has really provided me a good foundation for being able to use that when I'm on the city council, if I'm so fortunate.
Fantastic. So you clearly have a lot of experience kind of on the ground, and so with that must come some hard and soft skills. Can you tell us a little bit about how you operate? I mean, what do you bring to the whole, you know, culture of City Council?
Sure. So, you know, one of the things that I pride myself on is listening. You know, as Chair of the Planning Commission right now, we oftentimes get a lot of public citizens that are, you know, concerned about items, and they're very passionate about them. I am, as Chair, I've been very willing to listen to all of those. You know, we have three-minute limits, but I've gladly extended those until people are finished speaking and until everyone has a turn to speak. So I'm a big fan of public involvement and engagement. And as a city council member, I would continue that practice and really be open to listening all, and listening and taking in all perspectives. You know, so those are, you know, that's my, I guess I would say, my major one. Another one is, you know, I come from a technical background as a mechanical engineer, so, you know, I think that would be a great asset to the city as well. You know, there's a lot of difficult concepts that city council members have to grasp, and they have to grasp them quickly to be able to make good decisions. And so coming from a technical background, I have that skill to be able to interpret information and to apply the knowledge from that in making decisions.
What in particular would you like to see developed in this, you know, area of industry, you know, considering that, you know, we have, you know, the Pittsburgh of the past and, you know, where it's going now? I mean, what do you see is the new wave of industry for the city of Pittsburgh?
Yeah, I mean, I would love to see something along the lines of, you know, a, I'll call it light manufacturing. So, you know, nothing too intense like what we see already, but definitely using up our land to be able to create jobs, you know, packaging facilities or something along those lines, that, you know, that I think that would be a great use of, and it would also increase, you know, manufacturing that we have. New fabrication facilities for new technology. You know, I think that's kind of the wave of the future. Unfortunately, here in the Bay Area, we don't see a lot of new tech manufacturing. But, you know, we're, Pittsburgh specifically is a place and a location where it is strategically placed where, you know, it'd be a great value to, you know, shipping. It's in a good shipping lane. So I think new tech manufacturing would be great. It would bring both technology to our city as well as manufacture, grow manufacturing.
Well, that would certainly be very welcomed in the area, Contra Costa County as a whole. So is that perspective in any way tied to your, you know, outlook on education? I mean, like, industry clearly translates into certain types of jobs, and you mentioned that, you know, certain types of facilities, you know, with, I mean, it's, I guess it's implied that there are certain types of opportunities. And so with regard to tech, do you see like a gap or something like that that might exist, which, you know, precludes us from maybe, you know, having those high-tech jobs or those other types of technical positions?
Sure. I mean, absolutely. You look at areas like San Jose, and everywhere in their education system, you'll find traces of tech in there, you know, leading indicators that people are really interested in tech, and eventually they go on and work in the tech industry. And there's a lot of partnership between industry and education or educational organizations. I think Pittsburgh needs a lot of that. You know, we already have, you know, a P-Tech program at LMC, for example, that really goes to grow and educate people that want to work in manufacturing, like at the refineries here in, you know, in the area. But also, you know, I would say that we need more STEM-based focused programs that are trying to target younger, much younger audiences. So we need to get them while they're young so that they can, you know, have that STEM mindset so that it can help them when they're deciding on a career path.
Sure. So now you being with Dow Chemical, is it right?
Yes.
So certainly there's a need for a lot of the younger workforce to rise up and eventually attain those positions that are becoming available in the STEM, or that would be science, technology, engineering and math, right?
Yep.
So we certainly have to apply a lot of resources and attention to this area of education. So what is your outlook in terms of how the city needs to move forward in terms of changing certain regulatory items to create that positive impact?
Yeah, I mean, in terms of the city, you know, getting involved, you know, obviously the city council doesn't have too much in terms of the educational aspect or portion. I would say that the city council would, could definitely encourage industry to have a partnership with cities. And as a city leader, you can do a lot when you're not, even when you're not on the dais itself and voting, right? You can get out there and act as a leader for our community and kind of bring those two groups together to help achieve that goal.
Fantastic. So what would you say would be your 90-day plan, let's say, to kind of, you know, jump in there, hit the ground running?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I definitely would say that, you know, first off, getting together and saying, with industries that are already there existing, you know, we do have a lot of STEM partnerships already. You know, I think that we can do a lot more. And so it would be kind of getting those groups together and really challenging them to work together to be able to achieve that certain goal. So getting them, getting them in the same room and providing that challenge for them, right? We're the city of Pittsburgh. We want to see this end result when it comes to, you know, graduates that are coming because those are the graduates that we're willing to hire, right, as industry? So, you know, making sure, you know, a lot of times, at least at Berkeley, they had a industry advisory council that advised, you know, the engineering department. And so that kind of model, I think, would serve very well to help provide eventually those jobs for our community or citizens of Pittsburgh.
That's cool. So do you have any, I don't know, success metrics or something that you could say would define success for the city in terms of driving an impact in these areas? Like, what can you tell us about where we're at now and where you would like to see us go as a result of your involvement?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we definitely would have to partner with our industry partners to be able to get hiring metrics, but that's one of them. You know, I think what we're seeing a lot in industry, and I do have a little bit of an insider's look because I do work for Dow Chemical, is we're seeing and struggling to actually get qualified applicants to be able to hire them. And so, you know, that as a baseline would serve to, so using that as a baseline, I would say, you know, I'd definitely like to see us be at a place where we can provide more qualified applicants to industry than they actually need, right? So that it's actually a competitive pool. And with it being a competitive pool, you know, you would have potentially higher wages even for getting even top-notch candidates to apply and get into manufacturing jobs.
So certainly getting more qualified applicants in this area of STEM is something that the city could certainly use more of. So what other areas within the city of Pittsburgh do you see needing more help? I mean, infrastructure, anything, you know, related to, you know, the way that the city's being, you know, run, managed? I mean, is there, is there any systemic issue that you'd like to see addressed?
Yeah, so I mean, I think that you bring up infrastructure. I think that that's a great point or area that we could focus a little bit more on. You know, in terms of infrastructure, one of the, I see two parts of that infrastructure in terms of traffic management and the available streets that we have versus the amount of traffic that we have. I think it is safe to say that we have a traffic problem in Pittsburgh. And, you know, I think that the city has done a lot of traffic studies, et cetera, and tried to do some optimization when it comes to traffic lights, et cetera. But I think we need to look at a holistic picture of our major traffic areas where people are going from their home to either the highway or in, at the end of the day, when they're coming from the highway to their home. And we really need to take toll of how much impact that has for our residents and citizens. You know, it adds a lot of stress to their commutes, which, you know, you don't really want to start your day off that way, and you definitely don't want to finish off your day that way. So anything that we can do as a city to help improve that or city leadership to improve that, I think, would go a long way to make our citizens' lives a lot easier. And the second part of that, so aside from traffic, is actual maintenance of streets. You know, that is important. We use our streets a lot. If you think about your day and you get in your car, every time you get in your car, you're using a street. And as our city gets older and older, you know, we definitely have to pay attention to how much money we're spending into maintaining our streets and making sure that we're not falling behind in maintaining that. You know, I think that the city right now needs to really assess where we can improve and get more funding to be able to stay ahead of the curve here. We don't want to be, you know, five years from now in a situation where we have to do major street repairs because that's gonna be more expensive. So if we can get ahead of the problem now and stem that tide, I think that we'll be in phenomenal shape in five or 10 years.
Fantastic. I would certainly attest to the need for less, fewer bumpy roads.
Yeah, yeah.
So certainly this has a tie-in with economic development to a certain extent because, I guess, you know, you got good streets, people, you know, more pedestrians, more businesses, kind of a improving the curb appeal, you know, of the city.
Right.
What can you tell us about the economic development, you know, of the city and other, you know, areas of, you know, industry or business and how you could potentially drive impact there?
Okay. Yeah, so let's talk about kind of the next four to five years of Pittsburgh when it comes to economic development. As you know, there's a BART station that's gonna be going in on Railroad Avenue, and that is probably the one opportunity that we have in our city in the next four or five years and even long-term to get it right in terms of economic development. You know, we're gonna have developers coming to us and trying to, you know, make great deals to secure land around BART and build, you know, apartment buildings and storefronts and everything like that. I think we need to take a very good look at, you know, who those developers are, what their plans are, be very critical of them. We don't need to rubber stamp, and we don't need to settle for anything less than what the city of Pittsburgh deserves. So I think that's gonna be a key for the future development. Economic development of our area is to really shape that area specifically in town to make it very attractive such that businesses will actually want to come and use up tenant spaces in mixed-use developments. For example, if you have an apartment building with retail space downstairs, much like we have in downtown Pittsburgh, which is an issue right now. But definitely being able to attract businesses in that area will be key. Now, in terms of downtown Pittsburgh, we have a lot of vacant space in terms of potential opportunity to make downtown into what it deserves to be. You know, when we had redevelopment funds, we, the city spent a lot of money in reshaping downtown. And I think that one of the things, unfortunately, that we weren't able to accomplish was finally getting it to a point where it is sustainable and there's a lot of business going through there, and people are actually going down there and shopping and supporting our local businesses. The vision that I have for downtown is a vision much like that of Todos Santos Park here in Concord. I think that that area in itself is a lovely space. It has a sense of place when you're there. You can bring your family down there, and you can grab a bite to eat, you can grab a beer, you can do a little shopping, even watch a movie, not to, you know, maybe a street down from Todos Santos Park. So I'd like to, you know, to have that vision for that area, essentially do what it, what we need to do in terms of our policies, our zoning codes or practices and planning practices, and make sure that that area is ready and geared for, you know, success in terms of, well, at least my vision for that area to be like a Todos Santos Park.
Yeah, fantastic. So certainly the park here in Concord, where we're at here, just blocks away, and Todos Santos, it's got a motto where families come first. And so clearly, I can see some of that resonating with you as well. So as you go and execute on these plans, what are your thoughts regarding inclusion of the community with regard to the current process that's in place and how you'd like to impact change there to make sure that voices are heard? What would you do to help move things in the right direction?
Right. So I would see two things in that area are implemented. One of them is more social media outreach. So I think that right now, you know, you post an agenda for items that come before the city council or the planning commission, and you might get the people that are always engaged in attending planning commissions. But how do we bring in the future and the voice of the future into those discussions? I think that is critical. And where, where can we get those people? It's through social media. So we need to have that kind of mindset when we're conducting business on behalf of the city. And I think that that's, that's the most important thing that I could do very early on as a council member, is push city staff to really engage our youth and our citizens and older citizens that are on social media to be able to bring them into our discussions. You know, so I think that that would be a great opportunity there. And secondly, I think neighborhood outreach meetings are definitely important. I know that city staff does quite a few of those already, but I'd like to see more of them. You know, I'd like to see more outreach to our Hispanic communities, to our potentially minority communities. You know, the Hispanic population in Pittsburgh is somewhere around 40% of the entire population. And so I think that their voice needs to be heard as well. I think it's essential that we bring everybody in to the discussion when we're making decisions and when we're developing visions for the future of Pittsburgh.
Are there certain barriers to inclusion that you see? Let's say, for example, this percentage of Hispanics that are present in the city of Pittsburgh, is there some kind of like a language barrier or what is standing in the way of having them at the table? And how would you address that?
Yeah, I mean, I would say, you know, starting off, it's really, it's really about going to them and going to them in forums where they feel comfortable, right? So I talked about neighborhood meetings. Well, neighborhood meetings where you're having them come to a location that you pick might not be the best way to interact with where they feel like they can be open because they may not be in a space where they feel comfortable, right? So going to their areas of where they feel comfortable, like churches, right? So we have St. Peter Martyr, we have Good Shepherd, we have other churches in the area where I think we can have great discussions and they would feel comfortable. And really, I think once they feel like they are heard, then they will continue to be a part of the solution and a part of the process. But if we just go to say that, you know, mark a checkbox that, you know, we met with our community members, that, I think, is a big hurdle because if people don't feel like they're being heard, it disenfranchises them and makes them not want to come back into the process.
Yeah, fantastic. So, yeah, this is certainly a visionary perspective, you know, to bring the whole social media aspect and, you know, get out into the community where the people are comfortable. So, you know, certainly, like, you live in Pittsburgh now, right?
Yes.
And you're part of that community now, right?
Live and work in Pittsburgh, yes.
Live and work in Pittsburgh. So tell us about Juan Banalas. You know, who's the guy behind the smart frames here? What can you share with us about your life in Pittsburgh and what?
Yeah, so, I mean, as is very, you know, familiar to Hispanic families, I have a big family that's here in Pittsburgh, and we're very close. You know, I can't, I don't even, I can't even think of how many cousins I have or aunts and uncles. But, you know, I think one of the things that I really hold on to is and value is being and spending time with my family. You know, that's very important to me. And I think that not just Hispanics, but across Pittsburgh, we're a very proud community. And family values are important to us. You know, so that's, that's definitely at the top of my values is family. You know, like I said, I live and work in Pittsburgh. I grew up in Pittsburgh. Yeah, I went to all the public schools. Well, I'll say Highlands Elementary, Central Junior High, Pittsburgh High School. And I say all the public schools because UC Berkeley is also a public school. It doesn't happen to be in Pittsburgh, but it's not too far away. It doesn't happen, happen to be in Pittsburgh, but it's not too far away. And, you know, one of, one of the things that I learned and was instilled in me when I was in Berkeley, uh, definitely was, uh, commitment to public service. So, you know, my day job is being an engineer. What do I do on my off hours or spare time? I want to be the voice of people, um, that don't necessarily feel like they can speak or, um, or, and I want to be, um, the person that is leading our community towards a brighter future, um, by using all the knowledge and resources that I've accumulated, um, you know, over the past years, uh, not only at UC Berkeley, but, um, you know, working and living in Pittsburgh.
Fantastic. Well, Juan, I would say that you're certainly, uh, you know, a heart-driven leader and certainly have some roots in the community. And so I'd like to thank you for coming out here and sharing your perspective with the Spanish Chamber of Commerce. The Spanish Chamber of Commerce is bringing you guys the candidate perspectives here as, you know, part of our service, uh, through the Government Affairs Committee. And so Juan, uh, thank you very much for coming out and, uh, sharing your, your perspective with us.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for having me.